Twenty five, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the master of the the Madison Planning Board. I see, what is that? I won't, I won't do this wrong. Elevation of alternates?
We have to get as close to seven as you can. We're gonna talk about this. We have to get as close to seven as you can. We had a little hiccup last month, so.
So we need to elevate. I'll make a motion to elevate the two alternates that are sitting here, Tia and Joe.
Yeah. Second.
A motion been made?
Second.
And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. We'll talk about that a little further on down.
You have a whole list of things.
I do. I'm busy.
Approval of the agenda as presented.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second it. Motion been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the September third, twenty twenty five, meeting minutes.
I have a correction, Mr. Chairman, if I could find it. I just reading through it, just one word that was incorrect. I'm not, we have to go through and read it again. I better not make a few errors, but I make a motion to approve.
A motion been made to approve the meeting minutes?
I'll second.
And seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number five is public comment. Seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment period. Number six is new business. We have no new business. Number seven is the Master Plan Scoring Committee, the meeting what we just had. Says update from Tia.
Sure. We had a great meeting. We discussed a second revision of the initial proposal from NCC. So one step closer to figuring out if we want to bring that to this board to then present to the select board to either give us the money or not. We're not ready, we, we need another month to review that second proposal before we can come before you and ask for that. We considered also creating a warrant for four thousand dollars roughly for NCC membership, which would give us membership pricing for the proposal. Basically, we whittled down the first proposal and we'd like to get the best price possible.
I have a thought on that, can we discuss that a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. We have a budget as a planning board. And we talked about the funds for that of forty two hundred dollars a year to join them. Is there other committees or boards in town that could use their services and take the money, put some money in each budget to pay for that? Take something from this board budget and something, I don't know if the Board of Appeals use, could use them, but like, we're gonna bring up, to talk about it at the meeting. What else can they provide to us for, in the town? What help could they give us? Because I'm sure the selectmen are gonna ask that, you want money, what can they give us for that money in return?
Well, their latest newsletter talked about help with brownfields. And, because we have at least one brownfield, right?
Yeah, on the other side of the baseball field?
Oh, well, the fire department too.
Right.
So.
Behind the fire department?
I think in front.
Oh.
PFOs.
Oh, gotcha.
PFOs. So.
Yeah, they do a lot of grant writing many times.
If they can help us in that way, I think it'd be easier to get the funds to be able to, you know, join and sustain.
Or get it in the bigger budget versus ours.
Yep. That might talk about, you know, a hit on this budget.
Yep.
As an idea to do it to incorporate that. We should have that in the back if we're gonna present something.
Sure. Do you feel like it would be more likely that it would be accepted or approved if it?
Yeah, I think if you could take the amount, the money and spread it around to a couple of different budgets, it's where we have, and do that, rather than be a separate hit on something.
Right.
Okay.
So, and something to think about with that. We probably should've talked about it at a other meeting, but.
How do we ask? Who do we ask?
Yes, ask him.
Ask him.
Adam.
I mean, I'd have, I'd have to do some look and see what, what they offer. I mean, I need to know if there are any other boards that they can assist. I think that the fee needs to come from one place. I don't want, I wouldn't want to see the money spread out.
Right. It's gotta land.
It's gotta land in one spot.
Yep.
But that doesn't mean it can't land in the planning board's budget and the explanation be that it's not just gonna be the planning board that benefits from this.
Right.
Okay. I can send this board the link to the membership opportunities and things that they give.
Yeah. They're bringing up in this forum here, where Adam is here, and I'd have some other ideas on a no.
Yeah.
Where we could, you know, where they can use their expertise.
Thank you.
Good. So that, we had a good meeting. Sort of, we're trying to figure out how to, to, to make a comprehensive plan, to have a finished master plan with visioning and everything versus what the chair would do.
We had some debate, we had some discussion.
Which is, which is good.
It's good, yeah.
Good. So, Chairman's report. Chairman had a wonderful September. And I guess that's it. So Heckman's report.
Nothing to report. You're gonna be, we're getting into budget season, so we'll look at that later in the meeting. I think that's on Kate's list, but.
Correspondence and administration. Pike Industries, update.
Pike Industries, so October ninth, that meeting for the site visit is out. Larry thought he was available that day, but he's gonna be in California doing a whole conversion for Pike. So I talked with Adam and he said he's available the sixteenth of October at three thirty, which is a Thursday, is everybody else, because then it's a little later out, three thirty. Larry's also going to be, he can, he can make that day. He's also gonna see if his quarry manager can also attend, so. How does that date look for everybody, the sixteenth of October at three thirty?
It's okay with me.
I'll send out an email and make sure, once I, I think it's gonna be okay, but he wants to have his quarry manager there. So everybody will drive to the second driveway closest to Community Market, that's where we're gonna meet the last time on that.
Second driveway going north?
South, like Community Market way. Towards Community Market.
Going towards Conway.
The first one then, going towards Conway, you're coming, sorry, I'm taking the wrong direction. Coming towards Conway, the first driveway.
Is that where their sign is?
It's where they go in and out with their trucks.
Their trucks?
Yeah.
Okay, they got signs there.
Yeah, there's a sign there, but there's no, the second driveway has like stone pillars.
Yeah.
First one doesn't have any, that has a sign, but no pillars.
You go past CP Smith's building, it's the first left.
First one on your left, past the store.
All CPs.
Well, for Pike, it's first, yeah.
So we're good at the sixteenth, three thirty? I will let Larry know that the board is okay with that. Okay.
Okay. Always helpful to send reminders.
Oh, I, I remind you guys, your steering planning committee too. So I, I.
Always helpful.
You and Paul, I need sure.
Voluntary merger on the Palmeroy thing is ready to be signed, which I will do. And then a voluntary merger for Peter Nicole and Peter Linton on Rickenstock Drive. Is that here as well?
Yeah, just in your second file. You have to go under.
And do we know anything about this one?
Mark Graffin was involved in that one.
And, do we have a tax map? Or is this old stuff?
They just, they bought, they bought a lot at auction and they're merging the lot with the current lot. The Lintons.
Oh.
Yeah.
Or where?
It's a separate file underneath that. Yeah, I gave it to you, it's underneath that file. Do you pull it, lift that one up, isn't there another file right there?
Oh, it's down here.
Yep. Yep, I want, they kept them separate because they have checks. Don't mess up my checks.
In, so they bought this lot at tax, at auction?
Well, they bought it, they bought it, they were, they always be selling it and they bid on it and they got it. Nobody else bid on the, on the lot.
It's something I always own.
Yes.
Okay.
Those just go onto that, yes.
So.
And it's, it's combined with their lot, so then we can know up there.
Yeah. Okay. I probably, you're gonna want me to leave, so I probably should just sign this.
You can't leave yet, you have to. Mark took it before you were assigned, what to do. Pink stickies. You can leave them there, I'll get them after.
Oh?
I'll pick them up when you're done.
Okay.
They're there. Thank you for doing that.
And, it also in Palmeroy is not just.
Yes, please. I want to get that out tomorrow. Thank you.
Ooh, nine, three, two, zero, two, five.
The checks there already, yep. Perfect.
That's a fat, fat file for a lot merger, huh?
I know, I know. It's like, I'm still under correspondent administration, we have the budget, which Linda has passed out and I've gotta do this with everybody. I've given you a copy of what we spent so far and our new budget, twenty six. And I'm not gonna see you before the end of, well, I will see you at the planning board meeting, but I want, we can't do this then, so we need to do this today, because she wants it by the very first one.
Do, do the budget.
Mm-hmm. So we can go down line item by line item, decide if you want to keep some the same. Last year for the legal line, we, we had seven thousand dollars. Do we want to keep that same amount for twenty six? We spent fifty three hundred and eighty dollars so far this year in our twenty five budget.
They're gonna spend more next month.
I don't know, I don't know, that's gonna be gone. But I just don't know what you'd wanna appropriate for next year.
And what do we have coming up for next year?
I never, you know what?
North Country Council.
I'm gonna tell ya, I, I don't know what to tell you of the legal lines anymore. I really can't give it, I can't give a, 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 a figure because I get slapped with things that are happening that, yeah.
And the planning board hasn't had any legal line on the, for cell tower?
No, because it never came here.
So it's all been, it's all been.
Correct. But I don't know in the future.
Correct.
What that decision will happen and it may end up in your lap, so I don't.
Oh, right, 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 because they could still come back.
Correct. That goes to hearing, the answer's due on the fourteenth of October with my certified record and it's in federal court, so I'm not sure when they scheduled their hearings, but it's coming up. So if, if it gets denied, I mean, if it gets granted for the applicant and denied for us, then it may come back to here. So, I don't know.
Which could be twenty twenty six or?
Could be, correct. Depending on how quickly the judge writes an order, I don't, they have thirty days, but they don't always get them done in thirty days.
And how much has the ZBA spent? You don't know?
Always, always way over. We're over our budget, way over.
But how much have they spent for that tower so far?
Probably close to thirteen, fourteen or anything.
Thirteen thousand.
And there's more to come. So, we're, we're, yeah, that's just another beast in itself. But I just wanna make sure you were, were asking for some kind of a, do I think that seven thousand dollars will cover for twenty twenty six? I don't know. If it were me, I'd go a little higher, but that's your choice.
Want to go to ten?
That's what I'm thinking. Adam, I can see you with your forehead, I'm sorry.
The selectmen like us.
I don't know what to do because we, I mean, we're in the red on the zoning board and I don't want that to happen here, you know? What are your thoughts, Adam? What do you think?
Oh, and the, and the.
No answer.
And the budget for these kind of boards is mostly the legal line, so there's nothing, nowhere else in their line to draw from.
Not really, no.
So.
No, I mean, the legal lines are hit, but I, I mean, I understand if you want to go to ten. I.
I just.
I could do my best to sell it because I understand it, but.
And what happens if we say ten and it's twenty? We spend twenty?
We'll find it somewhere.
We'll find it. We always do.
And sometimes out of the unreserved.
Yeah, it's a process. Yeah.
If you look at the budget, we haven't used much in, in supplies. I mean, we're, we're pretty much in line with that, but it's the legal line, it's our big, our big.
I mean, basing it off this year, the recommendation is, I'm sure is going to be to stay at seven, but not knowing what's coming with cell tower and things of that nature, I can understand the argument of ten.
And we're still gonna have Carrie Ann. I, I'm sure there's an outstanding bill right now, I paid one today, but I'm sure there's one outstanding for what's been happening the last couple of weeks.
Right.
And then there's gonna be, if she helps us on doing our zoning ordinance, that'll probably fall into, well, I don't know if it's gonna fall into, it's gonna have to fall into twenty twenty five because we have to deal with that before town meeting, if we're making changes.
Right.
There's, there, there are definite changes that have to happen. EDUs, that stuff has to.
Well, do we really need to change EDUs? The state's just gonna tell us what to do anyway.
I know, but yes, we do. Couple of them are overdue by July first and so. But I've got an email into her, I've asked her to look at our zoning ordinance and look at the new bills and kind of see where she can figure out, because I'd like her to actually talk with us on the fifth of November about that, that would be kind of cool.
Yeah. More than the master plan, that's where we need an update.
His zoning ordinance, yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Sorry, but I'm not trying to poo poo this, that, but these are like, these are laws we have to follow.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And I, I would like to see an update to the zoning that we were discussing with the Palmeroy case.
Right. I talked to her about, I mentioned that in email too. Well, that's like, that falls into that whole.
Yep. Right. That whole section.
Yep.
Well, the trouble is, you, you, you approach this year's problems with some changes and you never take the comprehensive look of throwing it all together and it's, so you put a Band-Aid here, you put a Band-Aid here and you put a Band-Aid here.
And, I mean, it's catching up with us.
So.
So we have to, we have to deal with it.
I, I would say put ten in there and I will, I will do my best to sell it because I completely understand it, so.
And then what about the other line items? Keep them the same, because we're in that.
I, I would like to see the rest of it flatlined, but I'm not the only person sitting here.
Flatlined like, like?
The same, the same for the rest of the ones.
Yeah, I think, I think we, I've been good about keeping everything kind of on the, on the blue side, so. I mean, I'm not gonna put a hit on it, the ten thousand's gonna cover it, because I don't know. This is just hypothetical right now because I don't know. I mean, I could say, yeah, ten thou, it's gonna cover us and then next April, we get slapped with something else and, you know, you just don't know. It's, it's an uncharted territory.
But you don't know how long anything's gonna take to get to you either, so.
Right.
And, I mean, you'll have to take another look at the North Country Council thing, if that's something we want to do.
That's also gonna be.
We can put ten in there for now, but if the North Country Council thing is something we're gonna want to do, we're gonna have to add that four thousand.
Does that go in the budget or would that go in as a warrant article? How would that, how would that?
I would put it in the budget, that's just my personal opinion.
You want to add it in now? It's better to have it in than not.
Yeah, I mean, these aren't final numbers anyway, but we can add it in and then take a look at it.
But, but that isn't really the number we're asking for. Right, the forty two is, is for North Country Council, but to get to that forty was, was another.
Oh, that's not in the budget, we'll just do the membership fee.
No, just the membership fees.
Yeah, just the membership fee, put it in your budget.
Put the membership fees in the budget.
The forty two hundred and whatever it was for the membership fee for NCC. That would go in this budget, but the money that you're talking about, forty thousand dollars, that would not go in.
That would be a warrant article, yeah, that's separate.
Okay, so for the master plan, on, are we on number two? Line item two on your sheet for master plan? News slash news?
No, 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 no.
So this is just an additional?
Yeah. So what do we need to, if we decide to go with North Country Council?
We would need four thousand two hundred and forty two for.
The membership.
Municipal membership, yep.
For one year.
For one year, yep.
And then what do we need to finish the visioning to give us a full master plan?
So for the first phase, I'll pull it up.
Isn't that eleven thousand?
For the entire thing, so we had the warrant article for twenty five thousand, but the entire master plan would be forty thousand eight hundred and seven dollars.
So you'd need another warrant article for twenty five thousand.
For fifteen.
For the phasing, we could get through the first.
I thought it was only eleven thousand in that. Is there another four thousand you added?
Yeah, it's, that, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry. It would be thirty six thousand five hundred and sixty five, thank you.
But, but for next year, it's eleven thousand for a warrant article, is what you're saying.
Okay, yep.
So I just didn't want to count that forty two twice, whether it was in that sixteen or.
No, so you'd be looking at a warrant article for eleven, but adding forty two hundred to the legal line here for our membership.
Right.
Right.
Not legal, well, it could go under the master, it could go, I could under NCC, I could make it an actual membership.
Yeah, you can make another line, wherever it is.
Take that master plan news out, could do NCC membership.
Yep.
Forty two, uh, four two four two, right, Tia?
Forty two fifty.
Oh, forty two fifty.
Forty two fifty is the number.
Fifty cents?
For the membership.
Fifty cents?
No, forty two thousand fifty, or forty two hundred and fifty dollars.
Forty two fifty.
Oh, sorry.
Four thousand two hundred and fifty, yep.
What's the one fifty that's there already?
That was something we decided last year, I don't even really know what that was for, to be honest. I think they were talking about doing a master plan, we were going back, nothing, but we came out of that, as you can see, nothing, I spent out that line because.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah. And the next line is the notices, which we've, we hadn't spent much money out of that either, so I think, I would leave that the same. At six hundred. Postage, we spent two hundred twenty four fifty, budget eight hundred.
Postage, you spent five oh seven eight one.
I mean, five oh, sorry.
Yep. I would leave it alone.
Yep. Okay.
And then supplies and adds five hundred, I'd leave that number two. I don't really buy a lot of supplies, but. And then workshops and travel, I'd still keep it at three hundred, just in case. I mean, some of the workshops I can, I booked Tia one today and myself, it's free, so I try to get as many free ones as I can. And then we order the books, the management's books, I ordered one book, one book and then one ebook. Last year, I ordered an ebook and she didn't give it to me and I said, I want an ebook so that when I get it, I can send it to everybody, so you can have it on your computer. And I'll bring the, the new book to the meetings, but. All right.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll do that, I will give this to Linda. Thank you. Just wanted to get that off. I want to be the first one in with my budget, and I will be. Tomorrow morning, I'll go first.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna run home and do the ref budget.
No, you're not. I need to. Second thing is, it was a condition on Hank Walther that he got a letter from the state and he didn't get it from the state, he got it from DNCR. I did receive this on September eighth, so I want everybody to know that I did receive his letter. He brought it in to be handled over to me, because that was the condition on the decision that he could do the rail bikes, so I have it and it's in his file, but I gave it a ready copy.
I don't think I have a copy.
I've got a copy, no, I think it's my copy.
Will you send it to us?
You have it with you, you have it from DNCR, I think.
Oh, the contract?
No, his letter that he got.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Sarah Stewart, yes. And so, last month, when we did our meeting, we talked about, like, Mark, when we, I want to bring this up, I'm not going to school you, I'm just gonna tell you. You had done, when we had the meeting, you had said we had a full board and we needed to elevate any alternates, so that's why tonight we all, we're gonna do that, because we actually were short.
We were short last time when you left?
Oh.
Which meant we couldn't, we couldn't elevate any because we were too short to elevate and then we couldn't have the non-public because we couldn't elevate.
But after talking with Cordell, we can, that, when we did our non-public, Paul could have elevated the two, which I was, I was not aware of that.
We didn't know.
We weren't even aware of that, so going forward, but you need to get as close to seven as you can in a regular meeting, so.
If we have them, elevate them.
Have them.
If we have them, we need to elevate them regardless.
If, if you get to get yourself.
To get to seven.
Correct. I just wanted, like, we know that. Rules of procedure. Last month, when we did our meeting, we talked about, went to Mark when we, I wanted to bring this up, and I'm not scolding you, I'm just gonna tell you. You had done, when we had the meeting, you had said we had a full board, and we needed to elevate any alternates, so that's why tonight we all, we're gonna do that, because we actually were short.
We were short last time when you left.
Oh.
Which meant we couldn't, we couldn't elevate any, because we were too short to elevate, and then we couldn't have the non-public, because we couldn't elevate.
But, after talking with Cordell, we can, that, when we did our non-public, Paul could have elevated the two, which.
Okay.
I was, I was not aware of that.
We didn't know.
We didn't know, we weren't even aware of that, so, going forward, but you need to be as close to seven as you can, in a regular meeting, so.
If we have them, elevate them.
Have them.
If we have them, we need to elevate them, regardless.
If, if you get to get yourself close to.
To get to seven.
Correct, I just wanted, everybody know that.
Yep.
Rules of procedure, sorry. And I think that's. It's not even a meeting. That is. That's all I have for me.
And the next thing on the agenda. Is Coleman non-public?
Yep, yes.
Can I ask something?
Sure.
So, it wasn't on the agenda, um, but I am wondering if everyone, um, filled out their visioning process sheets, again, asking again, you guys have those?
Okay, reminding everyone to fill out their visioning thing. I think she's reminding me, too, but.
I'm reminding everyone, I keep asking, I'll just keep asking until we're ready to go.
Is that the, what was that, Tia, I'm sorry.
The visioning prompt.
Okay.
So, it's essentially a deeper dive on our survey, and I should have mentioned this during the master plan update, I just got distracted. So, basically, every board in town and different departments are doing a little bit of a deeper dive on their vision for the town and coming projects, so I'm asking our board to also do this. And then we can review it, we can review it as a team, and I think that's what we decided to do.
Yes.
Or, you can submit them, but I'm bringing that back up.
Is this what we're supposed to be filling out, this little chart here?
Yes.
So, how would you, do you just want us to type it out of this, because I don't know how you could ever fill this in, actually put any information in this chart?
Yeah, you can type it out of it, um, or you can open it, um.
Okay.
Did I send it to you, I can send you the.
It's fine, I don't even have a computer, really, I just have my iPad, but, um.
Okay.
Just, a lot of this, I don't have any clue about, because I worked in an industry that I didn't have to think about anything, except. Big ideas, so I have ideas, but I don't know about this cross-functional teams, land use zoning, land cross-caustic funding, I just don't.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay, um, it's really just who you think that you may need to work with, like, whoever comes to mind, um.
Yeah.
Any zoning changes, stuff like that, but we can work through it as a group, um, because we have the zoning and planning experts, so.
Right.
We can figure it out, um, but basically, I just want you to think about where you see our town in ten years, and because the master plan falls under this board, it's important that we do the work, and we have a clear idea of what we can. Propose in the next few years. So, I can give you another month to work on it, um, and then we can come back and we put it on the agenda, and then we can fill it out.
Can we, is it allowable to, like, email you ideas that we type out, is that something that we can do? Or, you know, in my reading, can you do things on that?
Yeah.
Um.
You can, I just can't comment on it, but I can hold it.
Okay.
For.
Okay.
You can't do anything that would appear to be a meeting.
Okay.
So.
I wouldn't write you back, I would just hold.
Okay.
Here's my copy of.
The information. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you send me that again?
Yeah.
I'm gonna just send me your email, so I have it in my, I'll, I'll kind of write it down.
I'm gonna update an email to everybody, Tia, on this.
Kate, can I send you, I will send it to you, and you can.
I'm sorry, I was trolling something else.
That's okay, I'm going to send out this visioning prompt as an email, and then you can forward it out.
Who am I sending it to?
The board.
And Tia, there was something that came in, and I didn't write it down from you, I couldn't save it in my computer, in a file, couldn't let it save it. The format that you sent it in, couldn't do that.
The visioning prompt?
I don't know if it was a vision, but there was something else in there, I usually try to save, I have create a file in my computer, and stuff that comes in, I'll put it, save it to a file, I couldn't do it with some of the documents you sent.
Okay, all right, I'll look into it and make sure it's PDF, is that okay?
I think, I think that PDF, I can do it, yeah.
Okay. All right, so next month, we will come together with our sheets filled out. Deal?
Are we gonna make that an, an agenda item?
Yes, Kate, is that okay?
Okay.
To make the visioning prompt, fill it out, an agenda item, so that we do it.
Make it an agenda item?
Um, next meeting? Has it not happened?
Because.
I don't know.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what will happen on the fifth, that may be a long meeting.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, just keep that in mind, everybody.
Okay.
On the fifth, for what?
So. It's, because that piece will be.
The joint meeting. Oh, this will be. Okay, pause.
So, the agenda night is gonna be a visioning prompt, I'm gonna work on visioning prompts or something.
Yes.
If we have time.
Yes, and so that's part of, like, saving money, too, is that all of the boards are filling this out, so, we're using it as part of the feedback, um, for the master plan, instead of going out and getting all interviews, and having a consultant come in, and go to every board and ask for similar things. So, we have to get the info, we collect it, they're gonna analyze the data. That's it, thank you.
Good. Next on the agenda is non-public?
Non-public. Mark's gonna make a.
I'm leaving the building.
You have to read the, 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 the.
I can, I can make that motion if you want, to enter non-public. All right, I'll make the motion to enter non-public per RSA ninety-one A colon three, numeral two, little L. Consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Mark.
I think you need a roll call vote on that one.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Just because it's non-public, Adam, aye.
Mark, do you need, sorry, do you need that folder, that big one?
No, those are mine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they go with me.
Paul Littlefield?
Aye.
Paul Mox, aye.
Don't I level I?
Tia Gagnon, aye.
Jovia, aye.